Good evening. This is the City of Everett Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, July 20th, 2021. We'll call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Thank you, Cherry Anasak. Cherry Anasak?
Oh, here, yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Here.
Commissioner Labra?
Here.
Commissioner Finch?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, I think our attendance a little low. I think we were expecting one other commissioner to log in, so hopefully I will have some opening instructions. I'll read them slowly. Just wanted to remind everybody that while we are carefully making our way out of the state of emergency brought on by the pandemic, Planning Commission meetings remain remote for the time being. If you are accessing this meeting via phone, please be aware that there is about a 10-second delay on the broadcast and stream. If you wish to download the presentation materials or wish to comment and need to see the visual in real time, please visit everettwa.gov/PlanningCommission. I would like to remind anyone participating to please mute your microphone, or if you are calling in, mute your phone by pressing star six until called upon. Thank you for your patience, and stay tuned in the coming weeks for more information about bringing the Planning Commission back to in-person meetings. So I would ask the commissioners present if everybody's had a chance to review the minutes from the June 1st meeting?
Yes.
And it looks like we might have another, our fifth member here for our quorum tonight. Commissioner Atkins, are you on the line?
I am. Can you hear me?
All right, I can. So it looks like we have our quorum. I don't know if you heard, but I was just asking if there are any comments or additions or changes requested to the minutes from last meeting? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the meeting minutes from the June 1 Planning Commission meeting?
Commissioner Atkins, seconds.
It does sound like we're getting some feedback, so if you are on the line, could you please mute your phone if you're not participating at this time? I think we had a motion at a second, so let's call for a vote.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Labra?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Cherry Anasak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any member reports? Sounds like none. Then how about staff comments? York?
Hey, thank you, Cherry Anasak. Good evening, members of the commission and everyone else who's tuned in this evening. I hope your summer is going well. Just a few updates. After the Independence Day holiday, the city and the planning department took some significant steps towards reopening. Our buildings and offices are back open to the public. Staff are largely back in the office. Permit counter remains by appointment only with a mix of virtual and in-person meetings for now, so taking some ginger steps towards normalcy, I suppose you could say. And I think that's good news. On that note, staff is reviewing, as you mentioned in your opening remarks, Chair, staff is reviewing options for bringing the Planning Commission back to in-person meetings. It would be nice to someday actually get to meet all of you and vice versa. I am checking with the city leadership and coordinating with things like the city council and other boards and commissions and making sure we do this the right way, but potentially that could be within the next month or two. So commissioners, stay tuned to your emails, and members of the public, stay tuned to the website. We won't surprise you with anything at the last moment, but know that that would likely be on the horizon, and I do look forward to it myself. Hopefully, all of this reopening can bring about some efficiencies because staff and in turn, the Planning Commission has a lot of work ahead of us for the rest of this year. The draft Rethink Housing Action Plan was well received by the council on June 15th. I think that was after our last meeting in the first day of June or so. Becky presented the draft plan and the recommendations to the council. They had some wonderful questions and an overall positive response, and they looked forward to taking another crack at it later this year. So that'll come first back to the Planning Commission after we conduct another round of public outreach, including online chat sessions. Becky, correct me if I'm wrong, on the evening of July 29 and August 12 at 1:00 p.m. I see a nodding head, so it looks like those are right. So that's an opportunity for anybody who is interested to ask questions. Of course, on your own time, you're welcome and encouraged to read through the written materials and send in any comments you have. But if you have questions or would like to take advantage of the actual availability of staff from the comfort of your own home or local coffee shop, you can do so on July 29 and August 12, and you can see instructions for that on the planning department's webpage. I think we have named this project uniquely enough that if you just type in rethink housing into Google, that will take you to the right page. That's always good.
Yep, Everett Wa, rethink housing.
Great.
Thanks.
Okay. Was there anything else on rethink housing, Becky? Is that essentially a word? We're open for public comments. We're thinking through some of the comments we've heard from the Planning Commission and the council?
Yes, thank you, York. Just that we are still planning our kind of developer forum, and so we will keep you posted on how that progresses.
Great. The ones who actually build the houses, by and large. So rethink housing action plan, of course, we'll be coming back to the Planning Commission. We also have this year's docket of comprehensive plan amendments, which look to include a couple of property owner requests for comprehensive plan future land use map changes, as well as the first phase of a major update to the city's park recreation and open space plan. Was there anything other than that, Becky, than that we'll expect to bring to the Planning Commission in the early fall?
Yeah, so we'll be doing a briefing on the 17th of any docket items, and we think there's only one private, and then, as you mentioned, the park and parks plan, and I think that's it and for decision in September.
Great. Going down the line of work products that we have on the hook, two bills passed the legislature earlier this year that require action by the city in the form of an ordinance of land use action that would come through the Planning Commission. House Bill 1220 requires that transitional housing and permanent supportive housing be allowed wherever residences or hotels are allowed, and then also requires that shelters be permitted wherever hotels are allowed. Staff are meeting, I think actually tomorrow or in a couple days, to work out and confirm our approach on that. We may already be compliant with those requirements as spelled out in the bill. There's one zone, I think the industrial zone allows hotels but does not allow shelters, but there is also a provision in the bill that if you are largely compliant, like you allow in most of your zones, those three uses, that you may not have to achieve perfection, but we'll look at what the best approach will be and bring that back to you. House Bill 5235, and I will read this out, states that except for occupant limits on group living arrangements regulated under state law or on short-term rentals, and except for any lawful limits on occupant load per square foot or generally applicable health and safety provisions as established by applicable building code or city ordinance, a city or town may not regulate or limit the number of unrelated persons that may occupy a household or dwelling unit. And on that one, we do limit the number of unrelated persons that may occupy a dwelling unit to a group of not more than four related and unrelated adults and their related minor children, but not to exceed a total of eight related and unrelated persons. That's one that became effective on July 1st. We're still looking at the implications of that bill, but it seems pretty clear that we will need to bring some legislation to the Planning Commission, then the council to comply with the new law, and then we're trying to think through what might be some of the side effects that we may need to address as part of this shift in how we approach occupancy and dwelling units. In the meantime, we have coordinated with code enforcement to make sure that our enforcement actions are consistent with state law until we can actually get our codes changed. We are also working hard on tying up some loose ends from rethink zoning. I think I mentioned that in some previous meetings. We'll bring, planning on bringing you an omnibus ordinance of technical corrections and clarifications to that major overhaul of our zoning code as soon as we can. And all of that is a lot of work, and we really should have all of what I just listed through the Planning Commission before the end of the year, because after that, we'll be launching into hopefully some early action items from rethink housing, and then not long after that, we'll have to be starting work on the comprehensive plan periodic update, along with all of the other day-to-day, month-to-month business that we bring to the Planning Commission. So that's a ton of work for our staff, and that will be a lot of attention that we'll need from the Planning Commission over the next couple months. So I wish us all luck, and I have full confidence that we'll be able to turn all of those around into quality products for the city council's consideration. That's all I have prepared for today. Happy to take any questions on anything that I mentioned or any other questions you have. Otherwise, we'll launch into home occupations. And please, Becky or Kathy or Dan, for that matter, fill in if there's any other announcements or general points of interest you might have.
Thank you, York. That was great. Any commissioners with questions? All right, look forward to a busy rest of the year. Before we launch into our primary agenda item tonight, I would move into citizen comments on any items not on the agenda. So we do have, our primary agenda item here is Home Occupation Code Amendment, and we'll be getting to that. But if there are any members of the public on the line who did want to address the commission on any matter other than that, now would be an opportunity to do that. Kathy, are you aware of anybody who had indicated interest?
No, I don't have any guests here tonight. The only guest I have is Greg Lineberry, but I believe he's here on the home occupation regulation.
Okay. Okay, so I guess I'll just do one more second in case there's anybody we're missing. All right, sounds like we're not then. All right, with that, let's go ahead and move into our agenda item, which is the Home Occupation Code Amendment, and I believe that's Dan?
That's right. Thank you. Very happy to be here, commissioners, and I will make the transition to sharing my screen so you can all see it. I'm hoping that you can all see a blue screen with Home Occupation Code Amendment Public Hearing.
We can. Yes, you can maximize it if you're able to safely do so.
The home occupation, I thought I'd start with the whereas section that was included in the proposed resolution, just to emphasize the importance, or at least the methodology, of why we were thinking of making a code amendment. First of all, this is a key component of healthy and thriving community, and economic development can really provide the sustainability through jobs and commerce that keeps food on the table. Home occupations are a contributor to that, and they can facilitate the creation of small businesses. It's especially true, I think, that home occupations provide a really great, low-barrier-entry way of getting into a larger business. If you've ever started a business of yourself, you know that adding employees is a big step in any business, and also moving into a commercial space is a big step in any business. Right now, the way our code reads, a business owner would have to do both at the same time. As soon as they add employees, they would have to move into a commercial lease space, kind of doubling the overhead demands for their business. So...
I don't want to interrupt you, but your slideshow isn't advancing, and I just want to make sure we...
Well, so far, are we just on the whereas section, or is it?
No, it's on the title slide.
Okay.
So if you go down below your screen when you share...
Okay, this should work better now.
Yep, there you go. Thank you.
I think I must have been sharing the non-presentation version, so sorry about that. So I was talking about the lower barrier of entry, lowering the barrier of entry for businesses. The fourth point is our current code is difficult to oversee and to enforce, and we made some changes that we hope will make that easier for our staff. And finally, we hope to expand home opportunity, home occupation business opportunities throughout all zones where dwellings exist. So there were a lot of issues created. We created a matrix for you to show every single one, but I thought I'd start with the presentation on these four, because those are the ones that generated some public comment, as well as probably are kind of where the rubber meets the road a little bit more. If there are commissioners, obviously, that have other questions, or if other questions come up in the public hearing, I have slides for every single point. I just didn't want to bore you all with 40 slides. So the four uses are the fact that we are allowing new uses. We have never had employees being allowed in home occupations before, and we are suggesting that two be allowed, up to two. Parking for home occupation is allowed to, two vehicles are called out specifically. And there was also a comment that I thought should be addressed on a commerce-related noise issue. So before I launch into this very complicated slide, please ask any questions or if you have other suggestions, I will take your guidance. Hearing nothing. The first issue is the current prohibited use code is on the left of your screen, and that's the existing, and this is the biggest one, and I had to do it in two columns, so sorry about that, but I think it makes it fairly easy to read. And then the Planning Commission draft that we're proposing is on the right side. The next slide talks about the notes that we included. It reduces and clarifies the list of prohibited uses. Clinics, barber, beauty shops, offices with client visits, and retail sales would no longer be prohibited. And the language in the proposal has been added to prohibit wedding or event venues as a home occupation, and that was a suggestion that was made in the last Planning Commission meeting. Public comment, basically, I quoted parts of it. I didn't list the entire thing. I believe that you have all those public comments, but I wanted to just make sure that people knew that we had two different public comments that were encouraging us not to expand the uses. One of the comments, too, was that some of the undesirable uses that might be now allowed are retail sales of gun and ammunition. So that was the first area, prohibited uses. Are there any questions on that, or should we proceed to the second one?
Dan, I had a question about the gun sales that were mentioned in one of the public comment letters. Is that a prohibited use?
I am, my understanding is that it is not in a retail area, but I am not certain if other regulations control guns or ammunition sales.
Yeah, that, to me, seems like a relevant concern, just given the type of expansion we're talking about here. And so probably an answer we want before, well, it's probably something that someone should look into. I think it's a valid concern.
York or Becky, do you have anything to add to this? I'm not, I'm not certain, given the contentiousness of the issue, whether or not that is allowable, or, you know, typically cities have passed regulations to dissuade gun or ammunition sales, but I honestly do not know. So...
Well, under the current regulations, I'm sorry, Dan. Under the current regulations, it is not prohibited, and under the existing regulations, it's not prohibited. So certainly, that would be something we would probably have to consult with our city attorney on whether or not that was something the city could actually prohibit in a home occupation, but we could definitely look into that. But under the current and the proposed, it is not prohibited.
Under the current code, one could conduct retail sales of firearms out of their home?
Except for the retail sales, yeah. I mean, there definitely could be sales of firearms, but the way that the new code reads, yes, it would open up additional retail activity.
So if I can jump in, if we can prohibit that use and or retail sales, would that be something that the Planning Commission would want us to add to any recommendation?
I can't speak for the commission as a whole, but I would support that prohibition of retail sales of guns in residences.
So would I.
This is Commissioner Zalinski, and I have a broader concern with retail sales, period, in residential areas.
I wonder if, to make this process efficient, there could be a number of suggestions, amendments that the Planning Commission would like to make. Definitely welcome the discussion and getting some of these ideas on the table. Maybe take some notes on changes that you would like to see, and after we've gone through everything, can go through a round of motions and votes on changing the recommendations. I think what comes out of today will be a recommendation to the city council that started with a staff proposal, as you see it today, and then is thereafter modified by Planning Commission recommendation. Does that work as a process? I have not been through it with this Planning Commission, so if you have a different way you prefer to operate, that'd be great, but otherwise, I think this discussions, question and answer throughout the presentation would be great, and then maybe take notes of some of those topics that you would like to make motions on for the final product when we wrap up.
Yeah, great suggestion. Thank you.
Any other questions? I saw that Commissioner Labra had your hand raised. Did you get your question asked?
I had the same comment.
Okay. All right, go ahead, continue, Dan.
Okay, you got it. So employees, this is much simpler. Currently, we have a, there shall be no person other than a resident of the dwelling employed in the premises, and the proposed draft is no more than two people, other than the residents of the dwelling may work in the property at any time. So the note, obviously, is that we now are allowing two employees, and we did receive a public comment that spoke against that. The third issue, I'll just run through these, and I think, please stop me as I go. If you'd like to, parking, existing parking of a student, client, or employee vehicle shall not create any hazard or congestion, and we are changing that to parking of any of vehicles associated with home occupation shall use legal onsite or offsite parking spaces and comply with the provisions of 1934-105, and the number of business vehicles is limited to two. We believe this was a positive clarification of subjective words such as hazard and congestion, and it adds a specific limitation on the number of business vehicles. And the public comment that we received, just from both Ms. Cunningham and Mr. Koenig, was to not allow any parking. Mr. Koenig also referenced that if the proposed code does not allow receipt or delivery of products except as commonly associated with residential use, there's no need for business and vehicle trucks based on the proposed code amendment, so code requirement. And then finally, noise and dust and glare, et cetera. The existing is expanded in the proposal to make the maximum permissible level noise control district one apply to all home occupations, and that was a specific reference added. And Ms. Cunningham just referenced a situation where noise was created, and the way I worded it was commerce-related, as your example was a tow truck that wasn't particularly a home occupation-related, but it was a work vehicle that someone used for their work that made a lot of noise. So I'm wondering how to confront that. So I can walk through all the step-by-step, but I believe that many of the comments that you might have are encapsulated in those four, but I'm happy to touch on any others that you might wish.
Thank you, Dan. Yeah, any, oh, was there a comment, a commissioner comment, or staff comment?
This is Michael Finch. I wanted to know, should we hold our questions about those matters until the end, or would you like to talk about them now?
I was just going to suggest that maybe if commissioners had questions, we could do some commissioner comments before we open up for any public comment. Of course, then we could come back anyway, but I was going to suggest that we start with commissioner questions and comments at this point. So Commissioner Finch, did you have another question?
I just had two. One has to do with the 18,000 pounds GBW. Can you just clarify that that's the current standard? I understand that's the current standard for delivery trucks of that nature. Is that right? We're not increasing the size, scale, or weight of the permissible trucks. Is that right?
Yes, that's what I understand as well. I'm just going to go to deliveries to...
I believe there was no change to that section.
Okay, great. And then on the parking enforcement, we had talked in the last commission meeting about code enforcement, and I think that I asked about whether or not code enforcement worked on weekends, and I didn't see that anywhere in the memo.
We did confirm that they do not work on weekends. That was something that they were very specific about, that code enforcement oftentimes takes a significant amount of time, but they're a Monday through Friday group.
Yeah.
So my apologies for not including that in the.
That's okay. I, I think, you know, for me, that's, that's an ongoing concern. You know, as, as a property owner, I have, I've had the need to call code enforcement several times, and they are typically responsive. However, unfortunately, sometimes when I need them to be responsive, it's when they're not open. It's usually before people blocking alleys, things like that. Overnight parking in alleys. So I guess my concern about the, the combination of the enforcement mechanism not available two out of the seven days a week, combined with the, the loosened restrictions on parking, I don't know how to solve this issue. I, I do think that it's a valid concern that has been expressed by the public, but I, I'm not sure I have an answer to offer, so sorry about that. And I guess the, the final question I had was more global. Are there a number of inquiries that are coming in from residences that are asking about or seeking business licenses to conduct commerce from their home? Or is this a solution that we are providing, you know, in advance of there being a demand, a state of demand?
I will answer two questions. One is going back to your code enforcement on weekends. I, I should have expanded on that answer a little bit more. What the code enforcement people said, that for immediate response, they suggested that you call the police for, for parking enforcement or anything like that. Code enforcement is a different process. It requires longer documentation, but for an immediate concern, they suggested either 911, but hopefully the non-emergency line for police. The second question is, no, we haven't been like getting flooded by home occupations that are looking for expanded rules. We believe just that they are appropriate and that these will be something that we can inform residents of Everett, the flexibility that they have for entrepreneurial behavior. So we, we are doing this in advance of what we hope will be a strong response. I will say that I don't, I would be shocked if this isn't already happening to some degree in our city, and those that are not compliant with our home occupation are just under the radar and unlicensed and probably not paying business and occupation tax. So part of this is just making the, the code reasonable to allow more people to be in compliance.
I, I think that's, that's great. I, I, I guess my, my perception is consistent with your answer to the second question, Dan, and I think it's good to lay the groundwork for innovation with rules. And so based on your answer to the second question, I, I think that concerned members of the public should also know that we're not, we're likely not opening the floodgates here, that it's not going to be pandemonium, and that we're really trying to formalize and legalize and support businesses that are already growing in neighborhoods.
I think that's true. And, and I think it also is, we have been making a concerted effort on figuring out ways to make our economy more equitable and inclusive. And I sincerely believe that this is a step in the right direction. I didn't really underline that a whole lot in the staff report, but the lowering the bar, the barrier for entry into the economy is, is something that, that those experts in equitable and inclusive economies say is very important to do. So hopefully that is, adds, adds to the, to the discussion some as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see, thank you, Commissioner Finch. I see that Commissioner Zalinski has a question.
Yes, thank you, Cheerianisak. During our briefing last month, I expressed concerns about parking and traffic impacts potentially emanating from these, these amendments. And I continue to have that concern. Adding employees, the offsite employees, and allowing occupations which involve retail sales or services which generate traffic, a significant amount of traffic potentially, are things that I think might be not consistent with the goal of preserving single-family neighborhoods. So I don't have a solution to offer, unfortunately. My initial thought was to maybe require one or two additional parking spots on site. Many years ago, I did a, in our, in our last house, we created a internal accessory dwelling unit. And when we went through that permit process, we were required to show that we had spot for an additional car for the unit, which we were able to do without making any changes because we had a big enough driveway, we could do that. And that my, that's the thought I had about maybe adding a, a parking requirement for home occupations that are of that type that will either have an, an offsite employee or will generate business traffic like a barber shop or there any retail sales. I realize that you can only go so far that way without potentially impinging on the character of the single family if you start having little small parking lots sprinkled around. But I think there might be a middle ground that you, you could find for maybe just one or two spots that wouldn't, you know, create the impression of a little mini commercial areas here and there around the residential neighborhoods. And I guess I'd like to see some kind of solution suggested for addressing that, and I haven't seen one unless I'm missing something.
Well, I think, no, you haven't seen anything specifically like creating parking on site or, or requiring on employee parking in a certain area. The assumption, I think, is too full. One is that the city generally has right of way that can be used for commerce, and two, that limiting the hours that employees, customers, and clients can come to hours that generally are considered times when parking demands are maybe lower in residential neighborhoods because people are commuting to work with their car, gives a nice complimentary use of, of that, of that asset that, of the cities.
Commissioner Zalinski, do you have, do you have another question, I think, follow up?
Sorry about that.
Any follow up on that, Commissioner Zalinski?
Well, I guess my, my response to you, Dan, is that although there are probably a number of residential streets in the city that could accommodate additional cars pretty easily, that that's not universally true. I mean, I happen to live in an area where there's kind of limited on-street parking, and it tends to be pretty occupied for much of the day on every day. So I'm not fully satisfied that that addresses the issue, because, just because there's a variety of residential streets around the city. So we may have to do some more customizing to this in order to, for me to be able to support it.
Yeah, I, and honestly, it's, I, I completely appreciate your concern. I, I personally don't share it. I, I think that the right of way should be used broadly and shouldn't be like reserved for the residents parking around that area. So I, but you know, it's, it's, I, I understand the, the conflict there.
Commissioner Lauber, I see your hand raised as well?
Yes, I, I had a question. First of all, I support the, I guess, the general goal of this change, but I'm wondering what type of retail you're envisioning that you're promoting, I guess, by this?
You know, interestingly, earlier this, actually late last week, the mayor and I went to visit Amazon's distribution center in southwest Everett that they just opened. It's a new prototype robotics. And there are hundreds of thousands of retailers that are being supported through the online marketplace of Amazon and others, that if they were operating in Everett resident currently, they would be out of compliance. And I, that, that to me is the most logical retail, that it would be maybe some customers who are actually coming to the, the residents, but a lot of the, the residential, I'm sorry, a lot of the retail activity is going through the mail, through deliveries, and you know, it could be Etsy, it could be Amazon, it could be any number of different niche markets that, that are fulfilling that. So that's, that's what I envision. I, not that that's exactly what's going to happen, but I, that's what I can imagine just because it is such a robust commerce engine right now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dan, this is Commissioner Yassac. I do have a question. Has, has this stuff all been run by code enforcement? Have they had any comment or? Okay, I assume that was good.
Yes, their comments are incorporated in, in in, in the draft. They were very happy that, that we were continued to prohibit signage, for example. They were very happy with not having 25% of the floor area being the maximum for the residents because they don't, they're not generally allowed into the building. So there's no way for them to be able to measure that. So yeah, there were several different points that, that they felt like this was really an improvement.
Okay. And I guess I just want to add my comments. I think this is absolutely great. I, I've got no, no concerns. I think this is just a great example of forward thinking, and I know government frequently gets criticized for standing in the way of innovation and, and interrupting, you know, business activity, and this is just a great proactive example of, I think, as you said, you know, maximizing the, the, the right of way, the public space, that, and really just normalizing what probably is already happening anyway. So I, I am all for, I don't have any concerns about losing some of the restrictions, some potential retail sales. Everything is, is still constrained by it have to be lawful. The parking concerns, people still have to park lawfully. I think that's a great way to do it. Put it back to people, let them just use the space, be responsible, and yeah, so I, I, I think it's great. So I applaud the city and, and planning everybody. So this is, yeah. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments before we maybe open up to the public comment? Okay, with that, let's go ahead. I think we have at least one guest wants to, maybe want to address tonight. Kathy, do you want to call through anybody that's, that's here to, to, to address on this topic?
Sure, we've got, we've got another guest that joined us too for this item, but I'll call Greg Lineberry. Would you like to speak? Your mic is turned off. There we are.
There you go.
You can hear me now?
Me can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, I'm Greg Lineberry, Everett resident living at 3827 Cromer. I proposed amendments to the home occupation ordinance originally due to the COVID emergency. I think you're aware of that. I was made aware at the time that some Everett residents wanted to work from home in order to minimize unnecessary contacts and minimize the COVID transmission risk. But even though they work in jobs that would allow them to work from home very easily, they were the types of jobs that our municipal code prohibited, and they couldn't do that out of their homes. And, and a couple in particular made inquiry to the city and, and were told, no, you, that's, that's one of the prohibited occupations. So what are the occupations? You've heard about them. You can't do real estate work from home. You can't be paralegal and have client visits or have an assistant. You can't do haircuts or hairstyling. You can't have any employees or assistants working with you. By the letter of the law, a lot of the Amazon-type businesses that we know are going on selling jewelry out of the home is something that's prohibited, even if you're just doing that online. Oddly enough, almost all of these are commonly allowed in other jurisdictions. The examples I've given and the business commonly allowed to operate at the home in other jurisdictions are very low-impact work environments that for the most part have almost no impact on the neighborhood. So now that we're hopefully emerging from the COVID crisis, it's fair to ask, and well is there still a need, justifies moving forward with the change. And our response is that we've learned a lot from COVID. We've learned that we can do work from home. In many cases, starting a, running a business from the home eliminates one of the biggest barriers that anyone faces in starting a new business, and that's a large amount of capital required for a lease or a property acquisition or in the business audit. In fact, the trend toward home occupation is so clear now that you have probably heard a term to define it in your housing discussions, the live-work residence. Now, we're already seeing multifamily housing projects that include common conference rooms to support those that are working from the residence but need locations for client meetings that they don't have those within the residence. So that's not only a tremendous step forward for those that want to start a new business, but it's also a huge advantage for women or, or men that want to or need to work from home due to childcare. So in short, our existing ordinance is outdated. It creates significant barriers to entrepreneurs or those that want to work from home so they can care for a child or an elderly parent or a special needs child. The ordinance hasn't changed with the times, and it limits opportunity for many to start new businesses and grow them from their homes. Question came up about retail sales, and, and I will tell you that my original proposal did not include retail sales, it left that language in, but it was quickly pointed out to me that, that there's already a huge amount of retail transactions that are occurring within the city. People that run businesses, that sell products through Amazon, and they fulfill orders out of their homes or out of their garages. One family member that I actually wasn't aware of mentioned to me that, that she makes jewelry, she buys jewelry from other sources, she rep packages it, she does online programs, she sells a small amount of it out of her home where somebody may come to pick up an order, but a lot of it just gets packaged up and, and shipped out by Amazon. So she's, she's running a fairly significant retail business out of the home, but you would never know that looking from the outside because it has almost no impact on, on the neighborhood. Now, I don't have a perfect solution for you because of course you don't want to have, you want to allow that type of activity to continue to occur, but you don't want to have Walmart open up a, a small store out of your neighbor's home with the traffic that, that comes with that. I, I think staff landed at the right place by allowing sales and leaving it at that for the time being, but it certainly may need to be something that we come back and visit later on, you know, if we see examples of, of where that's just getting out of control. Cars, I, I will tell you that since I proposed this ordinance, you know, I, I knew of a few people that were running these types of businesses or that were interested in running these businesses. I'm now aware of probably 20 people that, that are already doing this. And as I kind of think through my mind of those examples, I can't think of a one where the kind of car traffic, you know, somebody who has, is a, a paralegal and has an assistant, usually they're parking in their driveway already, or they're, they're parking on the street in an area where there's plenty of parking during the day. Again, I would say that may be something that at some point in time we, we would have to revisit, but the types of businesses I think that this is going to impact and authorize and give a green light to, I don't think are the ones that are going to have any kind of impact and, and that you're going to generate any neighborhood complaints. So for those reasons, I, I hope in this proposed amendment to city council with the recommendation to adopt these changes, city staff have reviewed and improved my with the recommendation to adopt these changes, um, city staff have reviewed and improved my initial proposal. You've also offered enhancements. I support all of those as they, I, I think they've improved the initial proposal, and, and I would like to see it move forward to council. So that concludes my comment. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any, and, uh, appreciate your support and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Lineberry. Appreciate your being here and your comments. Uh, anyone else wanting to address the commission? Let's see, we have, do you have a couple of other guests?
Yeah, there's Ismail Mohammed.
Hi, this is Ismail Mohammed. Uh, I'm a developer in the Everett area. I wanted to draw the attention that, uh, we already have a live-work unit, and they have their, its own set of regulations. How these new regulations are going to affect, uh, the requirements for a live-work unit? Because they have its own parking requirement, own square footage requirement. So is that going to be a consideration to amend those two and include the live-work unit with this home? The live-work units are allowed in only certain zone, certain, uh, zones. So how is that going to, uh, be impacted? That's all my comment is. Thank you.
This is Becky McQuary. Um, I would say that, um, live-work units, uh, they're unique, and they are only allowed in our commercial zones. So, um, they're not a home occupation. It's just a different way of looking at, um, if you have a business, especially, um, historically where you have a business front and then you have your dwelling unit, um, either above or behind. So, um, this, this particular ordinance really does not apply to, uh, live-work units.
And, and I would add that, uh, while retail sales would be limited to the number of, uh, customers per day and per week, um, the live-work that was being operated, let's say, in the new Riverfront project would not be, that, that would be basically like a retail establishment, um, that you would find anywhere. Is, and I, I'd see Becky nodding, so I think I'm, I, I really get worried, Ismail, when I start trying to speak to the planning director and the long-range planner because I'm a developer like you and, and I tend to wing it a little bit too much. So hopefully I'm happy that they're nodding.
You did, you did great, Dan, and thank you, Ismail, for bringing that up at the last meeting. We did, uh, I, I thought that was a good, good comment, good question. We went back and did the research and feel comfortable for the reasons that Becky laid out. Um, I conceivably, since we've broadened live, um, home occupation to include residential units that are outside of residential zones, there could be some overlap, but in that case you would be able to, uh, if you needed the permissiveness that live-work provided and you fit those characteristics, you could be live-work. Uh, and if you are not in a zone that allows live-work or it was not built as a live-work, um, unit, then you would be held to the restrictions of the home occupation. So we did review it and felt fairly comfortable where that landed. Um, and I noticed, but while reviewing it, that for live-work units, at least one resident of each unit shall maintain a city business license for business on the premises at all times. That was, um, uh, that was news to me.
And I will, uh, one of the comments that was made by, uh, Mr. Lineberry talked about a, somebody selling on Etsy. And while now, as you probably understand, um, Amazon and online commerce pays sales tax to the point of sale. So residents who are buying through Amazon or Etsy will pay sales tax and we get our percentage of that. The BNO tax is paid at the, at the point of production. And I think what's largely happening for those businesses that are not allowed is they are, A, not licensed and because we say they cannot be licensed, and B, uh, that means they're not paying the BNO tax either. So, um, I think this is, not that I'm all about revenue, but it is an important, um, way that we are looking to provide services.
Thank you. Thank you for your response.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. A good, good point, good question. Um, do we have one other guest? I don't know if they wanted to speak on this subject.
That's all the guests I have tonight.
Okay, I'll, now just open, is there, are there any other members of the public that we're not seeing that were here that wanted to address the commission during this public hearing on this matter? Sounds like not. Okay, maybe I'll come back and see any, any additional commissioners with questions or comments? Any potential closing, uh, thoughts or comments from staff? Okay, with that, um, maybe does anybody have any thoughts about, uh, motion to close the public hearing?
I motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Atkins, thank you, any second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Finch. Uh, Kathy, if you could call for a vote?
Yes. Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Yan, or Chair Yanisak?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so it, uh, we do have, um, a draft proposal for a, um, amendment, a resolution recommending, uh, the city council adopt the Unified Development Code amendments for home occupations. Uh, is there any discussion on that or, um, motions anyone wishes to make? Does anybody want to make a motion to approve?
I'll motion to approve the, uh, code amendment as written.
That's Commissioner Atkins. Anyone with a second? I'll second that motion.
Do you want a roll call?
Yeah, so we've had a, a motion second for the, um, the resolution. Uh, and so, yeah, let's go ahead and, and have a vote.
Commissioner Atkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Finch?
No.
Commissioner Lavra?
Commissioner Lavra, did we, did we lose you?
Oh. Sorry, I, I, I think I will abstain. I'm kind of struggling with the gun sales part of it.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Uh, for the reasons I indicated in my comments, I must vote no.
Okay, and Chair Yanisak?
Yes. So it sounds like we didn't eat, we don't have a quorum, is that?
Right.
Okay, so, so does that mean essentially we've had no, no vote then?
What happened? Did we lose our quarter? Did we lose our quorum?
Well, well, with, if, if Commissioner Lavra abstains, is that, does that rob us of a quorum? I'm not sure, I guess that's the question.
Yeah, we need, uh, four approvals.
And I have two yes, two no, and one abstain.
One abstain, yeah.
Are there amendments?
Yeah, let, let me ask, if, if, so, if, essentially, I guess that, that, that vote goes nowhere. Does, does anybody have any other proposals they would, they would like to, to raise or, um, put before, put up for a vote?
Chair Yanisak, I am in support of the resolution if amended to exclude, uh, retail gun sales.
So that, that did sound like something that, that, that several commissioners mentioned. I suppose we might need to. There was also mentioned potentially about, um, maybe running that, having to run that through the legal department. Um, certainly, I know there was some effort in, like in Edmonds, for example, to, to regulate at a city level some firearm-related issues. And I think our, if I remember correctly, the court said that they couldn't do that. That's a state issue, but, um, I, I don't know, I don't know, I don't, I don't know what kind of language we could put in, but maybe something conditional, assuming that, that, or, or at least recommended to the city council that, assuming that, that doesn't run afoul of some other provision?
I, I think you could be comfortable just making the, the recommendation. Um, and we will do our double checking with legal. My superficial-level legal review shows that local governments have the ability to regulate gun sales by zone and location. I think what Edmonds or some others may have run afoul of is the state preempt's regulation of, uh, ownership and carrying and things like that. But, uh, um, but I, I believe restricting from home occupations seems likely enough to be permissible, that we could just move forward and we'll do our double checking before the council.
I would just say, I wonder if it's, it's, I would guess it's possible. For example, we wouldn't have to, to add something to our amendment saying that you couldn't sell, for example, marijuana from your home because there are already regulations about that that wouldn't be necessary. I, I, I would guess that it might, very late, quick lay opinion that there might be something related to firearms already about that for, to be a federal firearms dealer, or, uh, possible anyway, so.
You do have to be a dealer. I wasn't sure if that could be accomplished from the home, though.
It seems like.
Commissioner Atkins, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Becky.
We could do a little bit of, of research again, talk to legal, and then, you know, as you pass your resolution, we can report back to you and, and see if there were any issues related to, uh, gun sales in, um, home occupations.
Commissioner Atkins has his hand, has your hand raised. Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I, I also think that it's important if, uh, while researching this topic of staff, we're also able to, uh, just double-check, uh, whether, uh, curios and relics, uh, FFL license owner or, uh, licensees would be covered under a potential ban on retail, uh, sales of fire, or firearms and ammunition.
So Commissioner Finch, I don't know if we need to be that, that specific, but would you have, looking, I don't know if you have the, the text of the, um, resolution in front of you? Is there any particular place or language? Or maybe we could just, we could pass it generally and staff could insert it? I'm not sure what the best way for us to do it at this point would be.
Uh, defer to staff.
Okay. Uh, any, so, York, did you have a comment?
I, it seems like if you, if you move approval and then amend it, uh, I, I don't know if this is going to be the only amendment that might be, um, a way to, to bring in any potential amendments that you would like. So you could move in second approval of the staff recommendation and then move through your amendments. And those could be, um, as detailed and specific. If you would like to read out exact language, you can do that. If you would like to read out general language for staff to fill out the best way that we can, um, we can do that as well.
Okay, I think that, that probably the latter probably would work. Uh, so Commissioner Finch added some language. Did anybody have any additional comment about, about that or anything else they thought they wanted to, um, propose?
Uh, I just think it's, it's important that we make sure to include both firearms and ammunition sales in this.
Great. Well, I, I would just offer, not that you are asking us to do this, but we'll consider others, other categories of retail sales that might be inappropriate for residential as well.
And I just would say, you know, we do have that, uh, category of, we have prohibited uses, but then we have that provision that says, or anything that looks like it. So, uh, we do have that provision as well.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Uh, yes, I, I'm assuming that adult businesses are already regulated in such a way that they would be already prohibited.
Yes, I believe so, and will confirm.
Any other commissioner, um, input? So let, let me, let me summarize perhaps. Um, we have the, this draft, uh, resolution. I, I, it sounds to me like maybe there've been recommendations for at least two things that we could maybe add to this, that in addition to what's currently, uh, in the draft resolution, also add that, uh, commission, or the commission would recommend to the city council to also prohibit retail firearm and ammunition sales to the extent that that is not otherwise preempted or would violate any other provisions. And also add that if we have to, that it would include, um, forget the term, adult, uh, entertainment, is that, um, the term?
Yes.
I, I, if, if, if that, if that's, if that was the summary, it sounds like maybe is there a, a motion to approve the, the proposal or the proposed resolution with those additional, with that additional language to be, um, fleshed out by staff?
I motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, let's, let's have a vote on this. Kathy, can you call through that?
Yes. Commissioner Atkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Uh, just a clarification, we're, we are voting on the amendment, is that correct?
I, I guess I understood to be that, that, the, the, that we're voting on the same, the same proposal, the, the, or the draft resolution that was previously voted on and that did not pass, but this time it's the same thing but with those two additional, um, provisions added to go to the council.
Okay, in that case, I vote no.
And Chair Yanisak?
Yes.
Okay. That's motion carried.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for all that, uh, all, all that, that great discussion. I think that, um, with that, um, I was checking the agenda here. Um, I would just go back to staff if there are any, that, that, that concludes our agenda item. Uh, any last closing comments by staff?
Just say thank you for your deliberations and your good comments, and, um, we will do our research and definitely report back.
Yeah, thank you for staff. Great, 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 great job, great presentation. Appreciate it, it was hard work on this. Any, uh, anything for the good of the order before we conclude from any commissioners?
No, thank you.
Okay, I, I don't know, York, did you say when, do we have another meeting scheduled? Or are we wait and see?
Uh, wait and see. Right now, we had August 3rd canceled, the first meeting of August. I think we traditionally do for, uh, for a little summer break, and that'll give us some time. It's amazing how fast, uh, these meetings come along. When we try to get those packets out a week before, that's already in a couple days' time. So I think we'll be canceling the first, uh, meeting in August and reconvening August 17th. If I'm not mistaken, very likely that will be an online meeting, but we'll look at, uh, September potentially for in-person.
Okay, great, well, thank you, everybody. Have a great rest of your evening. We will close, uh, adjourn this meeting. Thank you.